I'll call the Bradleboro Planning Commission meeting for Monday, December 3rd, 2018 to order. And I have no announcements. Sue, do you?
No, I don't think I do. I gave you all a copy of the finely formatted townwide.
That's lovely.
Liz and I went to the Vermont statewide housing conference in November. It was excellent.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Paul bring things to the table.
We have so much knowledge now.
I had been told it's one of the best conferences that takes place in the state and it did not disappoint.
Good.
Maybe in two years we can go at it again.
It's always consistently good.
Always consistently good. No, I'm just saying in two years.
Oh, we can have more people.
Yeah, I will definitely try to make it in two years. As much as I will definitely do anything in two years.
Well said. Okay, shall we approve the minutes of the November 5th meeting? I'll give everybody a minute to review.
Should we all review before we say anything? Or should I just jump in?
You just jump right in.
With the signs part, I guess I didn't realize that the creative signs was addition was only relevant to wall-mounted signs in Zone 1. I thought it was townwide.
No.
We were discussing it.
It had at one point been for townwide and then the last version, I'm trying to think of my notes as to why it went to Zone 1. We have a lot of flexibility in ground signs, so that was less of an issue than the wall-mounted. So you could do some sort of interesting structural thing on a ground sign. But I think the issue that was mainly is with the wall signs.
We were focusing on blade signs and they're by definition attached to a building.
Well, we have the blade sign and then, I mean, we can go back and revisit that in January. I don't have that all with me. But if that seems to be, if that wasn't clear at that meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I thought it was just a townwide, any type of sign allowance for if there was a case made about a creative sign. I didn't realize it was so.
But that might be a little messy aesthetically.
Yeah, I think one of the reasons why we decided to limit it to Zone 1 was about the possibilities that might arise in some of the service centers and industrial areas.
Yeah, and Zone 1 is more than just the downtown, so it's not.
I mean, I'm not sure like how I feel on it one way or another. I just, I don't remember when we were considering it. I don't remember that.
So it's the urban center, village center, and neighborhood center. Yeah, I mean, we went away from the service center just because we didn't want a lot of latitude for huge signs that are more for the driving scale.
Yeah, I think we started out with a set of signs that were, that we wanted more flexibility about, that were in the downtown and that were pedestrian-related. So that's, we circled around to focus on that and bring it back to Zone 1.
You guys will see it again, I mean, before we take it to public hearings, so.
Time to review.
Okay, so if anyone else, we can all just give that a once-over in January when we see it again. Any other comments on the minutes?
I move that way exactly.
All right, all in favor?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. All right. Now, Sue, did you want to move things around in the agenda?
Yeah, I think Chris Hart from Bradleboro Housing Partnership offered to come to this meeting. So it'd be great to discuss the zoning districts surrounding West Bradleboro Village.
Great.
What's that?
Oh, well, in asking for public comments, the members of the public are up next, so.
Well, we can do public comment and.
Yeah, does anyone else have any comments that are not on the agenda? All right then. Let's discuss these potential land use regulation amendments particularly surrounding West Bradleboro Village.
So at the last meeting, I had started to explain that there are some changes going on at Melrose Terrace and so Chris had offered to come and speak to them. I think they're really interesting. And as a result of them, it possibly opens up some opportunities with what will be left of Melrose Terrace and its currently zoned residential neighborhood. And these are residential buildings, many of which are in the floodplain and will still, after the project is done, be in part of the floodplain. And that's not really an area where we're encouraging housing, so.
But they'll be out of the floodway.
Yes, yes. West Bradleboro Association has kind of spurred some conversations with various people, state organizations as to kind of, well, how might these be reused in the future? And so, I don't know if you want to take it from there, Chris, and they're not well-versed in the Melrose Terrace project. We haven't discussed it much here, I know Felicity.
Except for me.
Liz knows what's going on. I don't know if you want to speak to it, or Michael, if you want to say anything.
I came just, I mean, I like the idea of what's happening, but I don't plan to say much.
Yeah, and I know you.
I feel like you guys are really far away.
No, no, you can come and sit across. This is the old planner I made.
Thank you. You've got to color.
For you, but I did color a little bit.
I always color my site. It's easier to see.
It's fun. So this map is the, as you can see, it's done by our our stream engineers, Malona McBroom, who've been working probably for two years on the pre, it's called a pre-disaster mitigation award from FEMA, which is sort of ironic because it's not pre. But that said.
That's really weird.
I know.
Well, it's pre to any future.
Pre to it happening again.
Right. So to orient you, the hashed mark is in the, if you've got it sort of this way, is the George Miller Bridge coming out, coming from West Bee.
Oh, there you go.
So right here, yeah. So this is the bridge and this is downtown is over here. This is a box culvert that we will put, I should back up. So we have a $3.2 million pre-disaster mitigation award pending with FEMA. It will remove the 11 buildings that you can see here. It will create, this will all be a green space and water storage for a future flooding event. And the green that I outlined is, that's the boundary, that's where they'll be grading to.
Like a buffer or a berm?
A berm, yeah, it'll take it.
Drop down.
Yeah, so they're going to widen the stream two to three feet and they're going to drop the stream down two to three feet. And they're going to take all of this land, which is on this side of the green boundary, and drop that as well.
And is that in the floodway now?
That's all, most of it is in the floodway. Especially the buildings that you can see right along the brook. They actually filled the brook in to create the number of units that. Yeah, well, you know, it was 65. We didn't even have flood maps. So this will all become a very nice vegetated area. And if you can see, they're actually envisioning walking paths in this area. And we're having extensive discussions right now with the historic preservation people for FEMA around what kind of historic preservation we're going to do here.
These buildings are more than 50 years old?
Yeah, yeah, the whole thing is, yeah. So we're talking about interpretive signs and things like that. And I've got some other thoughts about what we might do. So that's what happens and we put this box culvert in the George Miller Bridge because that and then way over on Route 9, that bridge, those are the two bridges that caused a lot of the flooding issues. They're real pinchers for the stream. And the box culvert will help. It won't make a huge difference, but it'll help. And then with all of this area now available for the water, what will happen is the water will go up there and hopefully the gas cans and the propane tanks and all that stuff that I watched come down will stay up there as the water quickly recedes because those are the kinds of floods we have.
Are you required to have these pathways be unpaved?
They will be.
Unpaved?
Yeah, yeah. I don't think we'll have any additional pavement.
Okay, just checking.
Really pretty concerned about the amount of pavement that we have.
And you'll have a lot of flood storage here.
Yes, we will. Significant amount. So the black, I was just trying to show the new road that will be created at Melrose because now the road, and they'll remove the entire road. If you drive into Melrose, you can go this way and there's a road all the way through here. And all of that road will be removed and a new road, the black area, will be created. That is because, for safety. And we have neighbors on the other side of Melrose Street that need a good way in and out and, you know, in two ways, in and out. So that's the FEMA proposal.
I just have a couple of questions. Is this an existing, meet up with an existing road somewhere?
Yeah, this is Melrose Street.
It's Melrose Street.
And it goes all the way out and then meets up with Route 9.
And this line here, the new 100-year floodline, does that mean that this building, six units and the two units, they are within the 100-year flood?
They are.
Okay.
Yes, they are.
Not outside of?
No, but.
The other ones are outside of.
Are outside of it. Yeah, that's what's important. Well, it's very, well, I'll tell you how it works. This stuff is so interesting.
I'm scientific.
Really. The original FEMA maps, and correct me if I'm wrong, were done at a 20-foot interval and the new maps are done at a two-foot interval. So they're totally different.
More precise or something.
Totally different. I mean, the maps we're using were done in 1972, '73, maybe '75.
Well, that's a lot more clarity and.
Yeah, I mean, the new ones are.
Oh, yeah, you can actually see the old, the less specific lines. 500-year floodplain, floodway.
Yeah, so that's how you get, and Sue brought a copy of the new flood, the new map for this area, but it is, it's sort of a funny line, but.
It is a funny line and it's pending. I mean, so this, this new line is, you know, contingent on these, this floodplain restoration project.
This work, yeah.
Yeah, and the demolition of the system.
Yeah.
So the new 500, is the 500-year flood still as it's shown here?
No.
No, that changes as well.
That changes as well.
I can show you that.
The, these buildings now, these that are on this side of the green line go into a category of .02% flood annually, I think it is.
Which is commonly known as the 500.
Which is probably 500 now, is what we call the 500. Now they just use all these, you know, percents of whatever.
So with the berming, these, the six unit and two unit that's outside of the 500, those are, it hasn't been like calculated yet, but they should be safe or as.
Well, so that brings us to why we'd love you to include this in the village. All of this means, you know, our initial thinking was that all of Melrose needed to be torn down. And now we're thinking, well, maybe it doesn't all have to be torn down. Maybe these remaining buildings, especially this middle building, if you've ever even driven by Melrose, you see George Miller Drive and if you look down, you see this beautiful colonnade front on a huge building. It's all brick. It's really nice. That's the community room and it actually did not get any water in it during the storm. The apartments on either end did, but the community room itself did not flood. And it's beautiful. And sort of thinking about some historic preservation of Melrose, wouldn't it be great if we could repurpose and reuse these existing buildings as part of telling the story of Melrose? And so we've been talking with the West Bee folks and Felicity and Aaron about what can we do? And we've talked to, what's his name?
Paul Broom.
Paul Broom.
Preservation Trust.
Make sure that doesn't get on the tape. Based on his name. But, so we've been talking to historic preservation folks about what can we do here? And, you know, there's a lot of potential. The other is that West Bee really has no village center, you know, no like park.
Community center.
Yeah, no, community center. You know, it doesn't have a park. It doesn't have any of that. And this actually makes a really nice park. And it could actually make for a nice sort of community center in West Bradleboro.
Sue, do you have a drawing that shows this in relation to downtown West Bee?
Downtown West Bee.
The village, yes.
I do, it's kind of big.
I like the thing.
Oh, no, wait, I do have smaller versions.
Looks very exciting.
Playing off the big one is good, though, of course it'll take over the microphone.
So then what is your, like, what is your hoped goal with the space then? The buildings, the structures that will be existing, like, what are you envisioning?
Well, I would hope that, first of all, because the property is currently owned by HUD and they have a declaration of trust on the deed.
Yep.
We've had to get certain approvals from them and the approvals that we have.
We mean the Bradleboro House.
Yeah, the housing.
So this doesn't have anything to do with this Bradleboro Village yet?
Nope, nope. So we have, we have an agreement and approval from HUD to do this work. And one of the conditions is that we will dispose of the property. We will turn it over, we will get it out from HUD's ownership.
Who's buying it then?
Well, they're not going to be bought. We're going to transfer it for dollars to eliminate liability corporation. Which probably will be, at this point, was envisioned to be the housing authority in some fashion and Housing Vermont, the two development partners that did Red Clover. And we'll do the removal of all the residents from this site. After that, we really hadn't big plans and I'm not sure if that nonprofit will continue to own the property or if, you know, if it'll turn the property over to a conservancy group or some other entity. But the idea has always been that the property would go into the ownership of a nonprofit that wanted to basically use it for community activities. So that's the best I can tell you now.
So the goal of our discussion tonight then is to see what the best zoning designation for this property is after the demolition.
One thought has been education, you know, Academy School is across the street. So, you know, to use this more as a learning lab for kids. To use buildings as, you know, some kind of business incubator. They're cute little apartments and just as long as you keep your stuff up three feet, you'll be fine.
So that leads me to this one question I had about the two buildings that are remaining in the 100-year flood. Is there another entity besides us, like FEMA, who would regulate, continue to regulate this use?
Just the town.
Just the town, but under our flood regulations.
Yeah.
Yeah, and what do our flood regulations say?
If you substantially improve a building, which is increase its value 50% or more of its assessed value.
45 is what I was told is the, it says 50% in the rules, but 45.
You're on the bubble at 45.
Then you need, yeah, then you're going to need to bring it into compliance with the regulations. And so we require one foot above base flood elevation. I mean, it would be cost prohibitive. You can't, you can't, as a residential, so that's for a residential building. If it was a commercial building, you could flood-proof it one foot above base flood elevation. I mean, perhaps that can be done with these buildings. I'm sure there's some way to flood-proof it.
And no one's contemplating that these buildings would continue to be residential, is that correct?
I am not. As long as I'm part of this project, nobody will live there again. Other people don't have quite the experience. I do.
Will HUD require as part of their disposition any, anything to the deed that says they can't be residential? Or they just don't care? They're just, they just don't want it?
They just, they, there are, the condition on this disposition, because we're disposing it for a dollar, is that if in fact we sell the property for more, then we have to report that to HUD and we have to tell them what we're doing with the money.
If you sell it for more than a dollar.
If we sell it for more than a dollar. If we actually put the property on the market and we sell it and somebody buys it. I can tell you that there are many interesting facts about this property and one is that before the flood, it was estimated, it was appraised at $3.9 million. After the flood, it's now has an appraised value for the entire site of $180,000.
$180,000 with all the structures?
Well, well, well.
Yes, which is why for the public that is always asking me, why don't you paint? It's because we can't, because even painting the building will bring it dangerously close to the 50%. And why would we paint buildings that we really want to tear it down? So we're not going to paint those, but certainly the other buildings do need paint and it's just, it's tough.
So this isn't to happen, what's going to happen with the space? Like what other options are there with the entire area?
Well, I think education, office.
But I mean, like, if you get, if this doesn't go through, like, the Bradleboro Housing Authority's plan doesn't go through, what other options are there? Is there anything else on the table?
If we don't get the FEMA award, then we will go back to the drawing board to see how and who might help us remove the buildings.
When should you be hearing on the FEMA?
We should have heard this year. It's really taken a while. I think it's been two, two years, Michael. Two, oh, no, it's just, it's just been enormously.
And they're presently vacant and boarded up?
Vacant, boarded up, yes.
How long have they been vacant since the other?
Since I read?
Yep.
No, 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 no.
Since Red Clover opened up.
So what can we do in this zone that is the village of West Bradleboro?
So in your handouts that I gave to you, I gave you a listing of kind of the uses that are in the residential neighborhood. It's kind of the short list and on the backside is kind of the uses that would be permitted in the village center. So as you see, I mean, there's a whole bunch more retail, office kind of uses. There is no retail allowed in the residential neighborhood. There's kind of small, very small-scale professional services that are allowed. So it seems, you know, to make sense. I don't think there's been any change to the village center zoning district. I mean, since I can remember, you know, I think there is the state designation programs and from what I've seen lately, they seem, and our village center designation is smaller than what the zoning district is, but they seem to be allowing the village center designations from the state to be more expanded, to kind of take into more of a vision for the area.
So village center use table here says other community structures. Which would fit?
Which would be this.
And there's all sorts of things here.
There is educational.
Right, I think to your question, you know, what are we envisioning? It's really hard right now to think that far, you know, it could be, we're talking
Well, you hit the nail on the head for really, like, business incubators, basic schooling, you know, educational purposes and stuff, that's like.
And, and, you know, maybe, I don't know, you know, there's just, the village center gives us more, I think it gives the West Bee folks and the folks that are working on the historic preservation and, you know, just more ability to dream and think about how we can really make this a very useful property for the town and for West Bradleboro, which I think would be really great and it would be a wonderful history, you know, next life for Melrose and to really continue to serve the community better and deliver the best.
And does that Melrose Street that connects to Western Ave, is that like a?
The town road.
You know, I mean, it's a town road. Is it like, is that a sort of road that could, you know, function to, for a service center sort of?
Well, I mean, that's a question, I think if we are looking at changing Melrose Terrace, then what do you do? There are several houses. This is very steep, so, you know, while it backs up to this real residential zoning district, it's very separate. It kind of goes uphill from there. So then the question is, what do we do with those?
So are these houses?
Conversation with those properties.
Are these houses that are on the upside of Melrose elevated well above the flood?
Yes, I believe.
Yeah, I think the closer you get, one of them down here, close to Route 9, got hit pretty hard. It was, I think, this one or this one, but for the most part they're, yeah.
So it, there is the potential then for us to rezone the upper part of Melrose, the northern portion of Melrose Street as part of this residential district?
No, I think if we were to change it, it would, you'd want to consider the village center.
Okay, so the whole thing, including, what is this? Is this a little opening?
That is, yeah, no, that's not a great map, so.
So we're talking about rezoning the village center.
We're talking about expanding the designation of village center to include this property.
So it currently is residential neighborhood? And so we're just left with the option of leave it or change it?
Yeah, this is mislabeled Glen Street. This is actually Glen Street. So if you come down the George Miller Drive here, you're right into the Melrose property. I'm not really sure what's, here it looks vacant. Here's the West Stone Brook right here.
Yeah, so.
Oh, that's lilac. It's, it used to be brick.
Oh, yeah.
Now it's lilac plates or something. There's some homes here. This is Glen and this is Hayes Court.
Right.
Which is another BHP property and this is part of Tri Park.
So the place that we're talking about, this is too big, right? What she's got highlighted. We're not including this.
Oh, yeah, that's not what mine looks like.
We're just including just Melrose, just this section.
Just Melrose and then these houses probably under consideration or.
Or they can stay expansive.
Yeah, you'd want to look at them because the thing about putting Melrose in the village is center, is that it has parking, has a lot of parking space.
That's would be great.
So it has on-street parking, it has off-street parking, it has road parking, but when you go.
Are they gonna be getting rid of a lot of that pavement?
Yeah, but there's still.
Still substantial amount.
Yes, when you hit the green on the, what's that, I can't even tell. In the, near those, the six and two units, so off to the left, the road stops there. The existing road would end there. But there's still a lot of parking that's not shown on these maps that exists at Melrose that would stay because that's all in the upper, the areas where we have the buildings that are being kept. And that parking actually, yeah, it's not even shown on this, on this map, but there's, there's quite a bit. So to, to go further, you'd really wanna take a look at that road because the road is pretty narrow coming in and then it comes down into Melrose and then there's sort of this expanse of Melrose. Melrose is 8.11 acres. Five of that will go into mitigation, so there'll be three, a little over three acres left.
And what's nice about, what makes sense about Melrose is that it is all facing in, so its development has kind of turned its back on the Melrose Street.
Yes.
So I think you can easily access that site from the George Miller, whereas I think, I don't know, I could be wrong, but, you know, residents on Melrose Street, those other residents across the street are.
Horated differently.
They may cut through, but they are oriented differently.
If you're exiting the Melrose area, you live back in there, you go over George Miller Bridge because to go out onto Route 9 at the other end is really dangerous. So, because you're right at the bridge and it comes in at a, on the diagonal and you can't see anything. So everybody comes through Melrose to leave.
Okay.
Will there be any improvements to it being dangerous to exit out on Western Ave?
No, no, that's not land that we own, we don't have any control over it. It's a state bridge. We, you know, have really hoped that the state would fix the bridge because it was in the flood, it was a damaged, damaged part. But I don't, it's not gonna ever get to the, you know, high on their list, so. Which is why, another reason that we were really, driven is a bad pun, but we really wanted to make sure that there was, the George Miller Bridge remained and there was a, this remained.
Another point of progress.
To access a Nebris out of this property.
So there's two ways in and two ways out?
Yes.
And it's just a footpath over on the northwest side, across the Whitestone?
There, you know what, there isn't.
There's like maybe a mobile home park across the river.
Yeah, this is Glen and there's no way to get across to Glen right now. There is a footpath that starts at Glen and goes all the way up.
Up Brook.
Up, up the Brook, up through, I know it goes up through Garfield or Hayes Court. And I'm not sure how much further it goes, but there's a nice walking path all the way and.
That could be nice if this was gonna be expanded to the Village Center to have just so many accesses to it. You know, from Glen, from Melrose, the main one from, what's it correctly, George Miller.
Yeah, yeah, and certainly that's with, when we got to really looking at these maps and saw all of these great walking paths, we need to have a pretty, you know, a good discussion with the folks at Tri Park, but it would be great.
Is it this?
Yes, that's Glen. It'd be great to think about having a bridge, you know, some kind of bridge that then would connect to the Glen.
What's gonna be now the new Village Center?
Well, or, or the community resource that's there, walking and whatever else, you know.
So is there an alternative to rezoning this as Village Center?
And we do have a waterfront, well, we do have a waterfront district, but I don't think it makes as much sense.
Okay.
And it's really disjointed, I mean, at least as a Village Center, it's kind of an extension of what's already there. This is kind of a campus-like setting, so, you know, reusing the buildings in some other way, I think makes the most sense.
So does anyone else have any other comments that they'd like to make about?
Bradlborough West is all on board with us, I think.
Yeah, I do have a question, and this is a little earlier, thinking, you know, we've gotten some discussion about what might happen here, working with the housing partnerships. This is a question on the residential, is, can the residential, short-term residential be defined any differently? Or is that, would that, I'm just thinking of a possible use where people come in for a weekend, have a place to stay, have rooms to stay, or seminars or some other kind of events. Is that something that could happen?
Flood regulations talk about habitable structures, so that would include short-term rental, I'm sure.
But, I mean, you know, so part of, part of the buildings are outside, you know, they're, the ones, the office, the bigger building and the other six unit building.
It would be allowed, there's hotel motel, that's a conditional use, so that is something that could happen?
In the Village Center.
There's a bed and breakfast.
Yeah, and there's a bed and breakfast, there's.
Rooming and boarding house.
Feasible at all, but, you know, just.
Well, to Michael's point, the other is that in the, the big front building, there's actually four apartments upstairs.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, how tall are each of the buildings that are standing?
With the exception of the front building, they're all one-story.
And then the big, the big front building's four stories?
No, it's just two.
Oh, two, oh, it's four units.
They're four units up on the second floor, two on the other.
Okay, so this is a nice plan and we all seem to be, are we all in agreement that Sue should take it to the next step and propose a change to the zoning ordinance?
I am premature, I'm just wondering with all the other zoning that there is, does one of them, is it more applicable to not being on a main road? Because all the rest of the Village Center is, is right on a main road, I don't know if that plays a role.
To me it doesn't because it's got such easy access over the bridge, so it's not, you know, it's not an impediment.
Like, I don't know, mixed use maybe, I'm not sure.
I don't like the idea of something that's like not contiguous to it though, it feels a little, I don't know, I don't, it makes more sense for me to be contiguous to an existing district. And I think that because it's a nice little campus setting, you know, whether it's residential or a mix of offices and educational and whatnot, it's gonna help enliven the village, which could use some more non-residential uses.
Does anyone else in the public have anything that they'd like to add?
I guess I have one technical question. In the area that's going to be excavated out and then we configured as flood mitigation area, there are a number of tree plantings and other, you know, bushes. I was saying, yeah, every year they set their roots deeper, so is it true that it might take a few years before they're effective? And if a, a new flood happens too soon, could they be washed away? I mean, it's just a technical question?
It is a very technical question and I have a very non-technical answer and that is that these have been painstakingly done to the FEMA regulations. And the list of the landscaping materials is extensive. And I'm, I just have to trust that the both, any grass that they're putting in there, trees, any of that, they're, it's being put there because of this use. And they certainly, I'd be shocked if they were really suggesting that they were gonna put trees in there, especially that close to the Brook, that would get float away in a storm.
So this is all new vegetation?
Yes, the whole area gets, well, as I said, the whole area gets.
Excavated.
Excavated down and, and then there'll be the gradual incline back.
So Michael, I can't imagine that they would propose to put shrubbery there that wouldn't live.
You'd hope not.
One more, who is going to then be the landlord or the?
The owner, that's the, the limited liability corporation that at least at this point is going to be a corporation made up of the Bradlborough Housing Partnership and Housing Vermont. But it will have a different name and it will be a different entity. And we have not, we have a substantial match that we have to do with this grant. And we, because we haven't gotten it and it's really taken a long time, we have approached conservancy groups or anybody to help us with that fundraising and also frankly to see if they'd be interested in taking over some of the stewardship of, of the flood mitigation area in particular.
What about the buildings though, once everything's, that's probably way too premature to know, like the buildings themselves, like who's gonna be the deciding factor on what happens?
Well, the whole area is going to this limited liability corporation and then it may go to another nonprofit. But, you know, again, there's a real disincentive to privatizing it and a real incentive for it to be in the hands of a nonprofit. And that's the best I can say because it's all, it's pretty far in the future. You know, I think, I, I think that it would be great if there was a nonprofit that took it that was not the Housing Partnership because, you know, this isn't, this isn't our mission, you know, it's something very new. But, I don't know, that's, that's gonna take some time.
If you were here from FEMA by the end of this year, when would you move to construct? I mean, I know you just said there's a large match and there's some pieces to work out.
Oh, we were, we were ready to start construct, I mean, we've been ready to start.
You've been ready.
We're ready, we have.
I know you have your permits, so.
We have permits, we have, we have the demolition ready to go on the first four buildings. I mean, we will, we will move as fast as we can once we hear from them. But I'm sure there'll be notice and, you know, some other pre-construction work that we'll have to do. But we, I'd love to do this this summer, I think, I'd just love to get it done.
Well, this is great.
Been a while.
It's certainly, it's certainly moving the ball forward and we have our part to play and.
That'd be great.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
We've been doing some kind of minor tweaks that we'll be proposing to the select board in the new year, have some public hearings and.
We'll just include this as.
And if you want any information from us, just ask me. I'm pretty open book about it. We're a public agency, so we are an open book about all of this and I'm happy to, to share, you know, anything with you. Certainly can tell you what, how much I don't know about the future.
No tarot cards.
It all sounds super exciting.
But it is exciting, I think it's very exciting for Melrose and for the Village. It could be really, really exciting for that.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
And I'll leave you with those maps if you want them.
Oh, we love maps.
Beautiful as they are.
All right, Sue, I did have a question about your squiggly pink lines, which sort of differ.
Which way?
On whichever copy this is.
Yeah, I think I realized, let me find you the correct one.
So what you're gonna come back to us with is just a proposal for only the Melrose property?
Yeah.
Does it need to come back to us or is it just gonna go to our good, the select board?
No, no, we, it'll come back.
You'll guys have, you.
Look at everything together. Yeah, my plan is to have kind of one document that has all the changes in it. We'll have to map this.
It'll be more precise draft language.
And then we'll have to warrant it, we'll have a public hearing and then we'll send it on to the select board. They'll have public hearings and they ultimately are the ones that adopt some.
I have one question and the zoning bylaw for the Village, are a lot of those uses conditional? Which would mean they'd have to go to the.
Would you like the list?
Oh, I can get it off, I can get it off.
I got one right here.
No, a lot of them are, you can take that.
All right, thanks.
Do you want one, Michael?
I just curious.
Yeah, no, we moved away, we tried to get away from too many conditional uses.
Oh, okay.
In the rewrite.
All right, well, thank you very much.
You want them for us?
Good work for me and Tom.
Okay, should we discuss maximum footprints and maximum densities while we're in there?
I need to reference, could you put me on the end of your agenda, this is out of business.
Okay, so.
Maximum footprints.
So each of our zoning districts has a maximum building footprint. We've talked about, in the mixed-use zoning district, it is, I think it's 4,000 square feet. And we've talked previously about increasing it to 6,000 square feet. Working with Bradlborough Housing Partnerships to try to relocate the remaining people from Melrose Terrace. So their experience in, in trying to create affordable housing at a higher density, at an affordable cost. And then just some other examples that we've come across in the building, in, in our department, where we're like, oh, you can't do that because you're over the maximum building footprint. And we do have a waiver provision where you can get a 25% increase, but sometimes, you know, it's, it kind of affects the project. We didn't really feel that there is a great relief valve on the maximum building footprint. And in certain districts like the mixed-use or the Neighborhood Center, which is out by, but there's some of it on Putney Road and also out by Exit 1, it's not really allowing for kind of new types of development, maybe a transition.
Which we learned about on our conference.
Yeah, I mean, this also relates to some fair housing training I had and also the housing conference. And so when I looked at the zoning, I felt like we're kind of using three different types of zoning in there. We've got conventional zoning, which deals with uses and setback and minimum lot sizes that are kind of controlling areas. We also have some form-based zoning in there where we're getting at design, the massing, the public realm, you know, how much, what is it like in the front of the building? And we also have some performance zoning, which deals with like, if you meet this, then you can do it. So our impervious coverage, not, not allowing too much paved areas where you can't recharge the water. And I just felt like, what is it that we cared about the most when we were doing these zoning regulations? And we wanted to make the uses easier, we wanted less conditional uses. We also really cared about what the buildings looked like. We wanted it to fit in the character of the neighborhood. And that's where the maximum building footprint came into. But then we also have these standards where, you know, after 40 feet, you have to have a break in the massing of it so that it's kind of a visual break, so it doesn't look so imposing on the property. And in some areas, we're saying you have to have two stories or you have to have a certain pitch to the roof. And it just seems when you put them all together, it's, I think it can be a little limiting. And so we wanted a greater relief valve on the maximum building footprint. And Brian and I in the office thought about allowing a conditional use where you could get, rather than just a 25% waiver, by going through conditional use, you could get maybe up to twice the size or maybe one and a half time, not one and a half, you know, a 50% increase in it. When you go through conditional use review, you're really looking at the neighborhood and how does it fit in the neighborhood? So you're even more getting into design because that's how you would argue it fits with the neighborhood.
And so is it town-wide or certain districts?
There is no. There is no building footprint limitation in the. There is no building footprint limitation in the downtown, in the service center, there is none. I mean, I would, in the residential neighborhood, there is one, it's 4,000 square feet. I, I mean, I'm inclined to say. And there is nothing in the rural zoning district, so rural residential, there's no maximum building footprint. So it definitely applies to mixed use service center, no, sorry, mixed use neighborhood center. We can discuss whether it makes sense in the residential neighborhood. I think the waterfront has a. Yeah, they have an 8,000 square foot maximum, so I would say the waterfront as well.
Are you gonna add something?
Yeah, I was just a little confused by your terminology. So when you say, when it goes through the conditional use process, do you mean that these are only things that also have conditional uses in the zone they're in? Or that the extra footprint is a conditional use?
I, I think you mean the extra footprint would be a condition. That the asking.
Yeah.
Would be, there would be conditions imposed and you have to meet certain standards.
So do, are we determining the conditions now or are we just suggesting that we think it's a good idea to expand the maximum?
The latter.
Yep. And the conditions, conditional use criteria is already documented in here. So they're looking at compatibility with the neighborhood and the context of the building. They're looking at the character of the area, can the site handle it? Now, mind you, so maybe you're in the waterfront district and you want to build a 12,000 square foot building. You still need to, you know, meet the coverage requirements. There are other things that are gonna impose on it, so maybe you don't quite get your 12,000, but maybe you get close to it because you have to still meet some of our performance standards and setbacks, which are kind of the conventional zoning tools. So it's not, it's not a given, even as you go through, there's gonna be other things that limit the size of the building. It's just why do we have to have?
A double whammy.
Yeah.
So our limit now is, is, is 4,000 for one of them in?
In the residential.
In the residential and, and not necess, and is there, 4,000 is the only number I heard. So is it only residential where it's, where it's restricted?
No, in the mixed use district, um.
What is it? What's the maximum?
So, okay, in the Village Center, it's 6,000 square foot maximum. So I'm trying to think what is like a 6,000 square foot building.
Were you talking about the footprint or?
The footprint, yeah, so you can have multiple stories, but.
Just the footprint, 6,000 feet can. And then 4,000 feet in residential?
Yep. Um, in the neighborhood center, it's a 12,000 square foot maximum building. So my guess is that 12,000 is it?
This room is 1,000 square feet, I would assume.
12,000 square feet, I mean, the Walgreens is probably bigger than that. Most kind of standalone pharmacies are around 15,000 square feet, so it's not very big. Oh, I was thinking. Huh, okay. Well, I mean, it's big for Walgreens, but if you're trying to do kind of a mixed use with, um, you know, retail on the bottom and residential on top.
So the concern with a building that's too big is that it just looks out of place?
Yes.
And probably bunting up against property lines. Well, no, there'd be other rules, I would say, that's a boundary.
And the reason for this is inspired by some equitable housing stuff you were learning?
Yep.
Yeah, some model sizes, inclusionary housing were, would be restricted by what we have now.
This isn't because of the current situation that's happening?
No, I mean, I think it's just working with the ordinance, you know, I get, I get a call from, um, a grocer in town and they want to do an expansion and I look and they have, their current building is 15,900 square feet. And they, oh gosh, I'm kind of panicking like that because it's a zoning district. It's neighborhood center is a 12,000 square foot max. So I'm like, oh, they can't really expand. And then I remember, okay, there's a waiver, they're allowed up to 25%, even on the existing building, so they can. And, but depends on what is this expansion gonna be, is it gonna be, I hadn't talked to them yet. Finally had the conversation and it ends up that it's small and it fits within the waiver. But if this grocery store wanted to expand, I think it's something that the community would want.
They would expand because.
More taxes too.
They have the need, so. The market demands.
Yeah, and if they can expand and have it fit the neighborhood, then, you know, is, do we really have a problem with it?
Yeah, I don't think that.
So right now I feel like there's too many hammers that, you know, there can be a little released.
All right, so how do we all feel about it? Does anyone not feel that this is a good idea?
Well, I don't know, are we doing 4,000 to 6,000 or are we doing a 25%?
No, right now there is a 25% waiver, we're saying you could even, you could go up to double the square foot, is what I'd say. So if you're, you know, maximum footprint is, maybe double is too much, maybe it's 50% just by conditional use.
What did you guys learn that was so, that was inspiring about this, like what was the?
Yeah, give an example for housing.
So, well, first of all, one of the things I learned at a fair housing training is that if your zoning really doesn't allow denser multifamily housing, that actually can be a fair housing claim. So, um, so it basically, you know, we allow multifamily, we allow lots of things this way. But if actually it's prohibitive, then they can make a fair housing claim. And it's not just on the use, it can be on their dimensional standards and things like that.
Exclusionary zoning.
Yeah.
And then what happens?
Then you'd be sued.
Be sued.
Oh. In a worst case scenario.
It's exclusionary not to the actual people living there, but to the developer?
Yeah, to the property.
To the future tenants.
Yeah, right.
And then, you know, the next thing we're gonna talk about is the densities and, um, so some of the tools is, we know there's a affordable housing crisis in Brattleboro, we need more affordable housing. So sometimes zoning regulations have, I would say, in our case, unintended consequences. We're not trying to not have affordable housing, but we're not really letting the market dictate. So, um, if we're saying that you're only allowed a 12,000 square foot footprint, or sorry, 6,000 in this case, and on top of that, you're only allowed 12 dwelling units per acre, you are kind of saying a maximum of 12 units in 6,000 square feet. Where right now we know that there is an interest in smaller units. So why couldn't you have 18 dwelling units in, on a 6,000? So then you can reduce the cost by increasing the density. So there, there's just different ways, you know, to get at it. You can increase density, um, which is kind of what we're trying to do.
And this is for residential and mixed use in Village Center areas?
When we get into. Well, it would, for the footprint, yes, it would be for both, it would, it would be for residential or commercial would be.
And the density?
The density, we have two measures of density. If it's a residential development, then we use dwelling units per acre. If it is a commercial development or a mixed use, we use floor area ratio, which is, um, a measurement of the lot size and then the floor, the gross floor area of the entire building. And so that way, um, that is just a better way to, to manage your residential densities.
We have a question.
Yeah, well, a comment. It's interesting, but I can't really think of a rhyme or reason for density. Because we know millions of people live very happily in remarkably dense urban areas and cities. So whatever density regulations we have are both arbitrary and mysterious. Why they exist is a pretty interesting question. Why can't the town have row houses like you find in many cities? And, or why can't the row houses be three stories high? As you say, you know, there could be many more families. What, what is it? It seems like planning might be about how people live comfortably and successfully in an urban environment.
That is what planning is and, and density is so that we have sufficient light and air and we're not overcrowding people and their housing, so.
Yeah.
And to maintain the neighborhood, uh, densities and feel and so forth.
So if you're talking that way, then you should be, actually, you should be starting discussing about what is sufficient light and air?
Well, I think that we did that when we discussed the zoning in general, the master plan in general, and then we're talking about a specifics, specific element that we can just tweak a little bit.
I didn't know you did that.
Yeah, yeah, we did.
Are we talking about density now or we just, do we give up on maximum?
We can go back. It kind of, it kind of goes together, but.
Oh, okay, so are we discussing, I guess that's my question, are we discussing it together or are we doing it one after the other? And have we left maximum footprint behind?
You can go in, back into it if you choose.
What is the density regulation right now?
It varies per district. So, so first of all, there is no density for the downtown. In the neighbor, oh, let me go back to the start, so. We do, well, it's, it's harder to explain, but for resi, let's talk residential density, okay? So we don't have any control on residential density in the downtown. So, you know, you can build your building, you can, you have a maximum floor area ratio, you can put as many units as you want. So they can be small units, they can be big units.
So density in itself isn't regulated, but the overall bulk of the building is regulated.
And then there's legal habitable sizes of dwellings. You know, just like through the building code and bathroom sizes and kitchen sizes, bedroom sizes?
I don't, I'm, I don't know the code too well.
Yeah.
I mean, there probably is.
There must be, there has to be.
Well, the other, the other tricky part is.
You can't house people in like.
Building inspectors.
In coffins anymore, or in little caged rooms.
No, but just the federal government doesn't. Yeah, no, but size of units is shrinking, I mean, you know, efficiency.
That's great if people want it and it's healthy.
Right. Residential in the Village Center is 12 dwelling units per acre max, which happens to be the same in a residential neighborhood. So, which is, which seems a little odd to me because a Village Center is supposed to be a kind of a denser, more bustling area than I think our, our residential neighborhoods. So 12 is on the small side for an area and it's got water and sewer. And, um, that's one area that I think that could be increased, actually in the Village Center.
Does it specify a size of dwelling unit?
I mean, no, we don't specify a size, but if you, I, I think once you start adding the layers, when you start looking at a building footprint and then you only get 12 dwelling units per acre, you might end up with a bigger, a bigger unit. As opposed to getting maybe 18 units and they're smaller and maybe meeting the need of different types of households. In the service center, there's 18 dwelling units per acre. So that's, that's actually, also that's the Putney Road area. If we want to encourage residential, that's pretty low because that might be an area where you have apartment buildings and condos and, you know, attached housing. That could be some good infill development over time, so 18 seems kind of low to me there. Neighborhood Center is also 18.
So Red Clover Commons had to get a.
Yeah.
Red Clover Commons came in after the old zoning as a planned unit development. They have about 28 dwelling units per acre. The current zoning, and their, their building is also much larger than the 12,000 square foot. I think it's maybe 20, maybe even higher than that.
So that was all before these new zones, zoning rights?
Yep.
And really couldn't be replicated.
It couldn't be replicated.
Unless we did something like this?
Yeah, it couldn't be replicated. And that's a well-designed project too, the way it sits on the site, it kind of angles back, so it's not like, and, you know, what you see on fairground is not.
So I'm curious about since, since Red Clover Commons was there, why did you write the zoning regulations as strictly as they were written?
It was such a change, I think, at the time, um, that came in at the end. I mean, I can't, I can't explain why. I mean, I think we knew that there'd be tweaks that would need to be made as you kind of worked through it. We didn't have building footprints before.
Didn't have building footprints?
We didn't have maximum building footprints in our old zoning, pre, pre 2015.
I guess I'm what I.
We had a cap, actually, I should say, there was a, there was a building cap in the service center. Is it over 25,000 square feet, then you had to do some sort of study.
I guess I'm wondering that, was there any justification for the choices that were made at the time the zoning regulations were written? Or were they?
Yes, I just couldn't recall what they are.
Because if there were, then it would be good for somebody to say, we thought that such and such would happen. It's turning out it's not gonna happen and so this is why we're changing it.
I think, I think at the time we weren't seeing, um, a lot of new residential development. I mean, we're still not outside of Wind and Windsor Housing Trust and Brattleboro Heart Housing Partnerships. I mean, they, so there's new affordable housing, yeah, we do wanna see more, but there's, uh, Buttonwood actually is a new development, but that was also done before this zoning.
But then as questions come in to Sue and to the zoning officer, then that's what starts the mental gears.
Would, um, would it be? Would it be a blanket decision if we decided to make a change to either this or say the service center? So we could have more things like Red Clover Commons. Would that, with the density and the maximum footprint have to apply to, to all uses? Or could it just apply to residential uses?
Well, in, in the downtown, it doesn't apply, correct?
Right, we use a floor area ratio in the downtown.
And commercial, so.
Actually, Brian's suggestion was maybe in the neighborhood center, we should look at a floor area ratio as well, which I don't disagree. Um, and that way we're not regulating the residential density, we're regulating the, you know, the structure again. And then however many units they can get in safely and, you know, which makes sense to the market. You let the market kind of drive the housing that's being built.
I know there are different rules for downtown parking requirements for buildings. That, they're different than what's in the neighborhood center, right?
Yes.
So is there an additional impact on parking or impervious surfaces if the density is increased?
Could the impervious, so we do have an impervious coverage requirement, so in the neighborhood center, because we're on that, it's 80% coverage, so you couldn't go over that, so you have to, and that includes parking areas. So we're basically looking at 20%, needs to have some sort of green space or recharge kind of going on.
But that's another example of a series of constraints. If you get rid of this one, you still have others, but to have them all jumbled up on top of each other, I think is restrictive. So that's why I wanted to do this.
So parking, you know, our parking is not onerous at all, it's kind of the minimum that you have to provide. And, you know, if somebody actually wants to double it, they need to explain why they need to do that. So I don't think, um, yeah, I don't think, well, it's different from downtown because in downtown we have public parking lots. We still want to provide parking or require parking in the neighborhood center and other districts, I think.
So have we discussed this sufficiently in a general?
I'm confused now if we're talking about density or footprint.
We're talking about both, both.
I mean, I can come back with a proposal I get or, you know, a memo, I.
I think that's what we should do, similar to the last discussion, that if you propose something, then we can more focus on that language and say yay or nay. something, then we can more focus on that language and say yay or nay, I think the topic has been introduced and we're all pretty familiar with it.
It would also be interesting to hear from someone who was part of the decision-making process to make these new.
We can look at that.
Yeah, I mean, we'll all look at minutes of stuff, I mean, we definitely were both involved.
Yeah.
Because can we see the old zone, well, also?
You can, they don't match up exactly though, but yeah, I can.
Just to get an idea of the reference, just so we know.
Yeah, I mean, we, for example, on Putney Road, there were nine different zoning districts. So it's not in, it's not necessarily an apples to apples.
What year did this happen?
This was 2015, after 20 years.
And and was there a was there a consultant that had sort of went through and made a blank lot of recommendations and maybe this was one of the consultant's recommendations?
They looked, well, for sure, some of it came from, but the Planning Commission.
We went over everything.
Signed off on it. The consultant basically took a look at the town plan and kind of where the zoning districts were and what we wanted in those different zoning districts and put them into language, some of them were, you know, the choice to go with a building footprint, that was definitely our choice at the time, it seemed like, you know, we're trying to preserve neighborhoods and kind of the feel of the neighborhoods, but what I felt is that it's not necessarily allowing change to some of the neighborhoods that are seeing change. So once Red Clover Commons goes in, now there's this huge influx of people and so maybe it changes the neighborhood a little bit and.
How many units?
And for the better. No, there are 55 units in the existing building and it works out to 28 dwelling units per acre.
Wow, that's that's very interesting, yeah, I mean, I'm not opposed to it, I just I guess I'd like to understand it a little bit better.
And density is, I mean, Spoon was right, I mean, density is pretty abstracting kind of magical and you know, it's like one of those things, I can show you lots of pictures of different densities of neighborhoods and you'd be like, oh, I didn't know it was that dense, you know, I mean, really, to me, it's a lot about the design of the building and the feel and you know, where you are.
So there's a lot of ways to come about that same goal.
Right, well, yeah, it seems it's also about amenities and transportation and all sorts of other things, I mean, you know, a whole bunch of people stuck out on Putney Road without any way to get to either where they work or where they can do their laundry or whatever in their house.
I know when we did the maximum building footprints, I did spend a lot of time looking at like in our mixed-use zoning districts, identifying what was kind of the average building side and where size and where were the anomalies, so for example, the old cultural intrigue where Mocha Joe's, that's in the mixed-use zoning district and that is about 20,000 square feet, so that's way over and so there was some debate in saying, well, yeah, you know, that is kind of a, you know, there's nothing wrong with that development and others felt, well, okay, but we don't want to encourage that everywhere in these zoning districts.
And what about the new building that's going up right down the block from that? Is that is that something that came in before the zoning change or?
The one, the snow block, the Window Windsor, no, that was after, but that's in the Urban Center, which is.
Oh, okay. And how big is that going to be?
That's going to be five stories, which some people are concerned it could it's going to block some of the sunlight from Elliott Street, the back of Elliott Street Buildings, I mean, there's some concerns that, you know, maybe that's a little too high.
But it's within its right. So shall we move on?
Yes, ma'am.
We have two more things to discuss and then Spoon's item, so which one do you want to do next, Brown Fields or the telecommunications?
Start the topic. Okay, so I had Rita in the office, I'm going to send her on these maps, you guys had mentioned the last time that it might be useful, there's two of each, so if you ask her.
Cool, maps.
She mapped it, the color is not really important, she differentiated the color, but one of the things that, as I was looking at these sites the other day is, and I have a call in to the consultant, she was in the field today. We, there is nothing mapped and nothing on the inventory that is West Brattleboro Village or further west, so kind of they kind of went to exit two and I looked at the proposal and it said the Route 9 corridor, so I need to talk with her to understand, if they didn't do it, I will ask them to go out and redo it, I I can't believe there are no petroleum sites out there because there's gas stations, there's existing gas stations.
Right.
And then farther down Snell Street too, maybe.
There is, I mean, we didn't, we did not survey the entire time, for sure.
That is, okay.
Yeah, that's the part.
And that's the three and a half.
So it's interesting, there's a couple of clusters and you all see the Putney Road is kind of around the exit one, I mean, they're existing buildings or you know, existing businesses, which I think with the exception of the old Friendly's here, but.
Wait, what about the old Friendly's?
Oh, that shows up on the list, I mean, in Putney Road, they're, you know, all existing businesses, it's not like there's anything vacant except, that's a big vacant, I saw.
And this one, this must be old because Red Clover isn't there.
Right, but the base map is old.
Wait, where's this?
Um, there's only one of these.
Oh, I wasn't seeing that Snell Street.
So this is where Red Clover Commons is now, so that's Walgreens, this is, here's the gas, I mean, this is an interesting area because you've got Burger King, I think a gas station.
Uh, the yellow.
I think the orange means it's a former petroleum site, but what's up specific, the orange color means.
I didn't know Red River was popular.
The color doesn't really, I think she color coded by the EPA code legend, that's Ford, face Ford, so auto body, you know.
So what's what does that orange mean?
I'm not sure exactly.
But anyway, so.
It's it's one of these, so it's coded D 001, I don't really know.
Writing on it that responds to.
What I would say for our purposes, it doesn't really matter what the color is, these are where the sites are.
And the other thing you were going to ask is about over over there by the Connecticut River.
Oh, right, right, Depot Street, yeah.
I saw the egg.
Well, we had a consultant that did the inventory and then Rita in our office mapped it, but as you'll see in the downtown, it doesn't show, this is a tank farm, you know, so once you look at this, you see kind of, which makes sense because if you go down Flat Street and Frost Street, that's kind of where we.
Yeah, and we should know this because this is.
So where did they get this information?
They have the information from the state of Vermont has a database, Sanborn Maps, it's all pre-existing.
So like these property owners are there?
They're on a list somewhere at this stage, whether they know it or not, it's it's not stuff we created, it's we just pulled together information.
Building seems like it's been there for a long time.
DEC has a big database of, you know, who's got underground storage tanks, maybe there was a spill there in the past and it got cleaned up, so that that's kind of the information.
So are these identified and tested hazardous wastes?
No, no, these are just sites that, you know, have some relation to petroleum over the course of history, not even now, you know, it might be something from back in the.
Might might be, I don't know, just dangerous to circulate maps that.
Yeah, so the goal, the goal of this inventory was to have a planning tool that if these sites wanted to redevelop themselves, that there would be funding because right now, if if you go through the title search and you find that it's on some sort of list and you want to address it, there's money that the town has now to get off it to to address it.
We just compiled the list.
We just compiled the list, but then it's a tool for further planning and we can say to these developers, we have a pot of money specifically for petroleum sites that we want to help you assess so that you can redevelop.
Yeah, I mean, particularly if there's something for sale on here, I mean, if you're if you're operating a, you know, if your business is operating, you know, there would be no need to undertake this, but if you're, you know, if the property is for sale, for example, like the Friendly's, you know, we can go to them and say, we've got this program, so if when you're talking with somebody who maybe wants to buy the the site, you should know that we have this program and funding is available to help them.
But it says NA on that, what does that mean?
What is it?
For the Friendly site, NA.
Probably this.
I know, but but most of them have numbers and it says NA as in not applicable.
I'll have to check that.
My guess is that would. Needs some assessing.
But we, if I recall correctly, we asked for these, right, because we were having trouble visualizing.
Seeing where the sites was. Because it was a big long spreadsheet, yes, you did.
So it's lovely.
Well, I think Rita did a nice job with the information that she had, but I think Sue is needs to have this conversation that she was talking about with the consultant, so she'll do that.
Yeah.
We'll discuss it again.
But the ones that are really interesting are the ones that are right in the middle of.
In downtown.
Right in downtown, yeah.
And some of these are being redeveloped, like the Snow Block, that's on here and that's under redevelopment, so in the inventory, the consultant basically suggested looking at the downtown area because if you look at that stretch of Flat Street and then onto Frost Street, there's a group of them.
Right.
So if you were going to do some area-wide planning or really try to target where you're going to spend your money, you should be looking at that, however, the Snow Block, they've done their environmental work, it probably, you know, because it wasn't done with public funds, they don't need to share with the state.
Which ones is the one?
It's the Flat Street, no, it's.
He pointed it to there.
It's this one.
That would be the one on the corner of the Black Flank.
Or this one.
Nice.
Yeah, but that's an interesting part of town.
And all of historic houses.
They probably just have tanks, it doesn't mean that it's, this doesn't mean there's contamination, it's just tanks.
And Pliny Park has been.
You know, all our homes have tanks.
There was, in the back of that property, there was an underground storage tank, I remember when they did the redevelopment.
The Brooks.
There's another part with this that I wanted to talk with you about, so we do have some more, we, you know, I can try to refine this for January, we and we can spend some of our petroleum money doing kind of a redevelopment plan with it, the EPA has put out just last week, late last week, new guidelines for their Brown Fields grants and one of the requirements in order to apply is that you need to have spent 75, 70% of your funds and so you might recall I have hazardous money and I have petroleum money, I've definitely met that on the hazardous, but they don't care, they're combining it, they said Town of Brattleboro, you have 400,000, so in order to be eligible, you need to have spent 280,000 dollars and we fall, I think we've spent about 245,000, I mean, most of our hazardous money has, if it's not spent, has been committed, I think we have maybe about 25,000 left for assessment, but we have about 170,000 of petroleum money to spend, so we would not be eligible to apply this year, we could return some of the petroleum money and then put ourselves into an eligibility where we would be eligible to apply and try to get some more hazardous money, I would not go for the petroleum money again. So I guess I would have you think for our January meeting, and I can put this in a memo as as well, if we don't really have any sites on the horizon, is it, are we better off trying to get more funding for hazardous substance for another three years rather than hold on to this petroleum money till the end of September of 2019, you know, maybe we give 100,000 back, that makes us eligible and we still keep the 70,000 and when I say give it back, it's not really ours right now, earmarked for us, but it's not like it's sitting in the town, sitting somewhere in Vegas.
We could spend the money in the short time term to kind of refine this and do some sort of planning study about maybe notifying these homeowners or these property owners?
Yeah, yeah.
And discussing what certain clusters, like in the downtown and whatever kind of cluster-y areas, that we could do some good from a planning perspective and then it might, especially in the downtown, work towards the proposed downtown master plan?
Yes, but we can't spend all the money that way, I mean.
No, I know.
But those who maybe. No, probably 15,000 for area-wide planning, I have to look at what I had written in the grant, but that's about it.
So we could do that, give some money back and get some more hazardous because you're pretty confident that there's always going to be a demand for that.
And hazardous is so much easier to use, there's extra restrictions on petroleum and.
Can you use hazardous for petroleum?
No.
What's more crucial, like what's more, I mean, not crucial, what's a.
Hazardous, I would say hazardous, there's restrictions on petroleum funding where you look back to property owners viable and liable and in to determine whether they're a viable company and if they're a liable company. In New England, a lot of our gas stations are owned by, you know, one or two companies, there's no mom and pop anymore and so every time you go back that, you know, company X owns it.
They're viable.
They're viable, can't use it, I had a site on Frost Street, you might recall, it was the Glenwood Collision, I wanted to do, I wanted to do that phase one under petroleum funds and because there had been auto uses on the site and whatnot and I couldn't because they looked back and at some point Barrows and Fisher Coal was in the ownership of that site and they said, well, they're still viable company, even though there was a name change in the company, so we couldn't do it, the state stepped in and did it and it was all great because Whetstone Berry bought it for some production, so you know, somebody else was able to step in and help them, but we couldn't because of our eligibility requirements.
But even if you couldn't, I mean, this town can't go running after Barrows and say you have to clean this up.
No, 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 no.
So they would just, it's just a way for the federal government not to pay for something.
Well, you wouldn't really want the federal government to pay for something when there's a viable company that's liable for the contamination.
Right, but you couldn't, if you couldn't actually get that company to pay for it.
Well, some of the property owners, the present-day property owners could have gotten.
Barrows to cough up the money.
Well, I mean, there was, first of all, there was no contamination there, so so all we have our funding to do is to do environmental site assessment, so if I own a property and you want to buy it, your bank might require you to have an environmental health assessment. If you want to use EPA funds and come through the town's program, we require, you would need to get me to sign off and say, yep, I'm okay, you can do an environmental site assessment on my property, you'd write it into the purchase and sale agreement and it would be done, but the results would be shared with Vermont DEC and the EPA because it's federal funds and that's the way the program works, alternatively, you might want to buy from Liz and you know, she she says, okay, you can do environmental site assessment, but you don't come through my program, you do your phase one, you feel good, you have your federal liability, you don't, if you don't come through the municipality's program, you don't need to share it with Vermont DEC and the EPA. You know, as a liable party, you know, say, say I own a site and, you know, I've sold it to Liz and then she sold it to you, all of a sudden, you find, you know, some contamination, maybe I owned a dry cleaner and years down the road, we find that it's contaminating the whole block of buildings because that's what perk can do, the state can come to me and say, Sue, you operated that dry cleaner, you're responsible for cleaning it up because they know that I was the one that, you know, for records, they can find it.
But you could say.
State is the only one, state or federal would enforce.
Oh, okay.
Town does not enforce anything, it's all optional.
It'd be the property owner, the current property owner enforcing.
No, you know, if I was contaminating off-site, it's going to be the state, which isn't to say Felicity couldn't have a claim on me as well.
Even though I bought it from Liz?
Yeah, because, I mean, basically you would determine that I owned.
Because she has a liability.
Because she's the one.
And look at, she's viable.
You'd be in the chain of liability, but if she didn't operate a dry cleaner, but I did, you'd come for me, it's kind of, you know, it's lots of lawyers.
Yeah, so the long and the short of it is. Yeah, so the long and the short of it is that we should give back the petroleum money.
Yes. So, what I'm hearing from you is that, because I had the conversation and he was going to tell me how it would happen because we'd have to, you know, release some of it by July, January first. And it can all happen, it's just kind of some stuff we do in my work plan and it's...
And you feel that we have way more than we...
I feel like we have way more than we need.
So...
Do we all agree?
I agree.
Yeah, I think...
Maybe I missed this because he said we can only do site or Phase One assessments, but can some of the funding, certainly the petroleum, but the hazardous or either be used to kind of get to the bottom of some of these leads? And see, because all these, I view as just leads, right? They're like evidence that may be trustworthy, maybe not.
We wouldn't do that without property owner's permission.
Right.
And we wouldn't, and the property wouldn't do it unless they were ready to...
Right.
Yeah, because it's not a, it's not a good use of money.
Yeah, so the purpose of the money is to create movement and get rid of any roadblocks to redevelopment.
Yeah.
So, the purpose of these maps is that there is not one?
The purpose of the maps was to kind of identify sites where maybe we could sell a little bit more money and do some area-wide planning, visualizing what redevelopment of a site could look like. But I don't want to touch, you know, like, we don't want to go to Exit One and do something up there when there's viable businesses and we don't know what their intention is. I mean, if we had the conversation and somebody said that, "Oh, yeah, you know, let's do it." Okay, but...
Okay. Should we move to the next?
My next chair?
No, you're not, one more, we'll make it quick.
We took Chris first, so I don't know if you've seen the agenda.
Review of Act 248A application?
This is a new one, right?
This is a new one.
Yeah, different than the poll.
Much bigger, right?
Yeah, this is much bigger, this is a sleigh. This is a sled on a rooftop.
Fifteen feet. I thought it was on the ground.
So...
And with green here and everything.
And Santa? So, this is...
Fifteen feet by nine feet.
Well, that's, that's the pad on the bottom.
Yeah.
So, this is six remote radio heads mounted on top of the roof of the Hampton Inn. The, each remote radio head is fifteen inches by fifteen, fifteen inches long by fifteen inches wide. So, you know, a little over a foot. So, there'd be six of them separated in three parts of the roof. They're all hidden behind, they say they're hidden behind a parapet of the roof because it's kind of a big sun. So, there would be some auxiliary wire that comes down that goes to a pad. That, the pad is fifteen feet by nineteen feet. It would be open on the sides, it would house the equipment for the remote radio heads. There would be a roof to shed the snow. And this is on the southern side of the Hampton Inn, so it is on the side that borders Win and Windsor Housing Trust's property, Great River Terrace. It, there's a buffer there. Currently, the zoning requires a twenty-foot setback. This pad would be within ten feet of the setback, but the buffer is maintained. And the only thing I would say is our zoning does allow for like some accessible accessory structures to be up to ten, you know, closer to the property line. So, there's no sensitive environmental features there, doesn't seem to impact because of the buffer, you know, will remain between the properties. I don't think it's any...
Just a reminder, this is not part of our zoning, it's part of this Act 248 process, which we can comment if we feel that it's significant.
Yeah, so we can comment if we want to, but if we don't...
What are these, what do these do?
Improve cell coverage. It's interesting.
For everybody or just for...
No, it's in the area, I mean, there are some kind of drop zones on Ninety-One.
Company is paying them to put them on the roof?
They rent the space, so the company gets some money. It's interesting that there's kind of a spate of upgrades and new installations, smaller. You know, it's not the towers, it's kind of...
And it's all private companies that are doing this. It's all the private companies that are doing this, it's not the state initiative.
No.
Well, the state used to put up the towers?
No, no.
There's always a, you know, a plea going up to Montpelier that we should have better...
Yeah, coverage. I mean, not unfortunately, because there are some not great areas, but they still seem to be capturing the travel in public, you know, Route Nine, hospitals doing one, Route Five, and the Ninety-One corridor.
Does the, does the housing trust maintain that twenty-foot barrier on their side of the property line?
No, the twenty feet is the property line to the Hampton Inn. And there's another, I'm not sure, it's a pre-existing building. It's probably closer to the property line than twenty feet from the property line to Great River Terrace. It's probably closer.
But that side yard setback was probably grandfather, because the building was built.
Are there any health concerns about...
We cannot comment on health concerns.
Oh, really?
The FCC does not allow us to.
What? Wow!
As a municipality, as in a butter, health, health is out of it.
We're not entitled to be concerned about health.
No, we are not.
Just air and space and light.
Yeah, better, make sure those things go into a file somewhere.
You're probably, it's probably a ten-foot, because this is the twenty feet. You're probably looking at ten-foot, maybe a little fifteen, anywhere from fifteen to ten on the Great River Terrace. Yeah, that's the line and that's the existing building. So, this is ten feet. Yeah.
And is there a visual barrier between the two properties?
There is, yeah, there's a row of trees, I can show you.
Lovely. I believe you.
It's pretty dense.
I believe you.
And I don't think they even have to clear a...
Are they evergreens though?
Yeah.
Can they make the antennas look like pigeons?
All right.
So, you guys, are we okay with that?
Should be seethills.
All right. We have, all right, so we don't want to take any action, there's no need to comment on this.
Okay, Mr. Ogave, you're up.
I'm Spur Ogave, for those of you who don't know. Somewhere in the, in the late nineties, I was appointed to the Traffic and Safety Committee and then the Planning Commission for six years, last year I was the Chair. And then elected to the Select Board and then ten years on the D R B. And this is the Chair of the Finance Committee. He is the Chair of the Charity Vision Committee. Now, I'm a school board. So, I have made the rounds. Planning has always been foremost and it's probably more important now than it ever was because I think most people are very concerned about the future. And they're not concerned at the end of what's really important to you. It's probably not going to be high on their list of parking spaces downtown, you know, when you're talking about the future, stuff like that. I think everybody I talk to is concerned about the environment, about the economy, and where we're headed in the future. And most people feel it looks pretty grim. But however it looks, I guess the question is what is there? Can you imagine yourself twenty years from now or twenty-five years from now saying, "If only we had done back then when we could have"? The future is in your hands and quite, quite literally. And, and, and what you do here is, will have something to do with how well we all... I won't be here. You all and your kids will survive in this community. And that, it's interesting because as I thought about that, I actually had this idea that we're probably, in fact, I wondered whether there might not be two, two sections to the Planning Commission. One, doing extant projects like you do week in and week out, you know, a zoning issue, a density issue, a setback issue, a cell tower issue and all that sort of stuff, which occupies most of your time. And, and another section, actually looking as deep as you possibly can into the future. It's, there is also an asset right now that we did not have then. Right now, for the first time in all the years I've lived in this town, we have a town manager who's listening, who has a wider view of the world, a much more sensitive view of the world, a much greater understanding and is listening. That, that was not true ten years ago, twenty years ago, when people just fervently wanted to believe that everything would be okay, don't worry. It's all going to work out, they will fix it when the time comes. A lot of time has passed and not only hasn't anything gotten fixed, more has gotten broken.
Okay, so Spoon, what do you want? What do you want us to do?
Well, I just want to say these things to this board because I am, I am a citizen of this town and there will be people following me. I want them to have food, I want them to have homes and, and, and jobs. And that's going to take a very, very different kind of planning and thinking about the future. And, I mean, there is a whole planning method in which you go way out, say a hundred years, and, and that's your dream. And then you go, "What do you have to do in fifty years to get to that hundred? What do you have to do in twenty years to get to the fifty? What do you have to do in five years to get to the ten? And what do you have to do today to get to the five?"
Okay, so let me tell you what the Planning Commission has done. When we wrote our town plan and it was, it took four years and it was published in 2015, recently updated, major part of the concern was sustainability. And it was sustainability, exactly what you're talking about.
Sustainability.
Sustainability, energy resources, flood control, post-Irene studies. That was the major focus that we spent four years working on. And that's, and the town plan is just what you were saying, it's, it's a comprehensive plan. So, a comprehensive plan. So, it's a long-term plan for development of the town consistent with these energy and sustainability goals that we had town meetings about and you might have been there. Sustainability was a large focus of that, came up with this report. The Energy Commission, who also is focused on that, had a big role in incorporating its goals into the master plan. Then from that plan, we revised the zoning ordinance to, to deal with that specific, the specific tasks that you were talking about. But then more, more specifically, the D R B, as you well know, aren't you a member of the D R B?
I remember very well.
Yeah, aren't you currently a member?
No, not currently, no.
You know, they do the site plan review. So, we're the planning function, as you discussed. But in terms of trying to get us to focus on sustainability, we have, we will, we are doing that. It's part of our job, we understand that responsibility. Our next long-range planning function is the downtown master plan. And when we focus on the downtown master plan, you can be sure that sustainability and energy conservation and flood control and resilient planning will all be part of that. And if you find that it isn't, you come to our public meetings and we can discuss it further.
On my watch, we did the 2002 plan. But we did something else besides. We recognized that at the end of each section, we had policies and all these different things. It was, we recognized our town plan as a wish list. It was after each little element, we listed ten, twenty different things that we thought, "Wouldn't it be nice if this is the way it was?" And when we finished, we also made a strategic plan that was ultimately rejected. But what we felt was, as a planning commission, we needed to give direction to the town about proceed, how to proceed into the future. And that was rejected. The Select Board at the time removed that from the town plan, saying to us, "We don't want to tie our hands, we don't really want a plan that we have to follow."
Spoon, let me interrupt you because a similar thing happened with our master plan. And it's very interesting because we had recommendations for the future and the Select Board was not ready to adopt them until we changed the zoning, which of course the Select Board reviewed and voted on. So, when they voted on these recommendations that we made in the town plan and they became part of the zoning ordinance, then we went back to the town plan and revised the town plan to make those recommendations more enforceable. So, we've done that, done that again, and we will continue when we revise the downtown master plan or create a downtown master plan to do the similar type of action. And ultimately, we are a creature of the Select Board and the Select Board will review our work and vote on it, so...
I, I realize that the, that the board makes the final decision. I don't, I think when I look at the future, one of the things that's becoming more and more apparent is that more and more, every municipality, every locality of whatever size is going to have to become more and more resilient, I think is the word. In other words, dependent on itself. And we see that every year now in small ways as, as the federal government keeps on lopping off the amounts of money that it passes down. And the state, of course, does the same also. And it's pretty hard not to imagine anymore that at some point, as we were back before, all of the largess from the state and the federal government started to come in in the thirties and forties, late thirties, the town had to take care of itself. It, it, it was actually taxpayers that actually, they had spent a remarkable eight percent of the entire budget giving people jobs. And I think we need to think of in terms of what does this town need to do to feed itself if it had to? What does this town need to do to maintain its wooden structures if it had to? What, what does this town need to do to maintain pure drinking water if it didn't have chemicals?
Spoon, we're not talking about anarchy here. We're talking about the land use plan that the state of Vermont requires the town of Brattleboro to maintain. I would suggest that you look at our... I would suggest that you look at our plan and you look at how forward-thinking it is and you look at all the elements of sustainability and resilience that are in here. And then come back and we'll have a discussion about the specifics of the plan. Anyone else, if anything else they'd like to add?
Uh, well, I thank Spoon for being here and you know what I'm saying, these things, you're, you're being heard, absolutely. You know, one of my, my biggest concerns is the future, you know, especially when it comes to the economy, when it comes to, you know, sustainability and the environment. You know, you're, so you're being heard loud and clear, absolutely. So I, I appreciate you coming and, and voicing these things.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is I'm asking everybody to look really hard at what you're doing and then ask yourself, "Has, has our level of sustainability actually changed? In spite of, are the things we are doing of consequence in the, in, in terms of what is likely to be necessary in the future?" And I don't, I don't, I guess all I can say is I don't feel it, I don't see it, I don't see stuff in the newspapers, I don't see articles, I don't see, hear about projects, I don't, it's just mainly the, it's just responding, it's reacting rather than, uh, I don't hear bigger. It, it probably won't be possible to maintain much residential housing outside the inner part of the town after a while. The, the cost of infrastructure and everything that's required to maintain houses spread out all over the town is probably not too long of a time going to be impossible.
But some of the things that we did, um, in the zoning was to allow cluster development out in the further parts of town because we realized that the cost to develop that land is so high.
And the infrastructure is a burden to the town. So again, there's sustainability elements in here, there's resiliency elements in here. Uh, there's post-Irene flood control and resiliency in here. And, you know, it's not just what you read in the paper. If you, you know, we do take our job seriously. We thank you for this reminder. But I would suggest that you look at our plan and see that we did and we are continuing to do what you asked.
Okay, all right. Well, you heard what I have to say.
Thank you.
We'll see. I mean, I'm on the school board and, uh, you know, we're hurt by the rapidly increasing poverty. Now every teacher in town is now a school teacher and a social worker. You've got to hire professional s- social workers on top of that for every school. And from that point on, I mean, there's a whole other issue. It's not for here, but it's about, uh, although it's peripheral because you talked about sustainability, resiliency and all of that stuff. And that's not really taught in our own public schools. And, and so if, if, if you ever wonder why it's so hard to get these ideas across is because the kids grow up without a real understanding of, of the world around them. They're, they're just, education in this country is geared to just preparing kids for the current industry, this time it's high-tech, and how to survive in a world controlled by high-tech industry. And that's what we teach and not, um, not very much, not nearly enough about the actual world that they're living in and how we got to where we are and where we're going from here.
Spoon, thank you very much.
All right.
I have a responsibility to my members to adjourn.
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
Um, maybe-
What do you have?
Tom. Yes, my third meeting, so pretty new. Get my bearings here. Maybe it would be helpful if you find some specific parts of like the land use regs and if you're aware of other municipalities elsewhere in Vermont or this country or the world that, that do it in a more sustainable or way, in your opinion? And then could bring them as a compare and contrast and-
One interesting thing you can do, go on to Google Maps and get aerial views of England.
Right. A lot of that's grandfathered in. A lot of that's grandfathered in.
And, and, and how you see in a, on an island that's relatively small with so many people, there is so much green land. And then-
Yeah, well, you know, they had colonies.
They had what?
Colonies.
Colonies? Well, they actually had, if you went back, maybe you remember. So who was, there was a famous planner in, what do they call it? Something City, the, uh-
Beautiful City, yeah.
The what?
The Garden City.
The Garden City or something like that. And, uh, but-
Anyway, Spoon.
It was.
We need to go home.
Everybody's got to go home.
They move to adjourn?
Yes, second.
All favors to him.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Happy holidays.